...the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming to the July 2nd commission meeting. I'd remind everybody to silence their cellphones and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly over in the end, and listening devices for anyone who needs those are with Robert and he can help you with that. If not, I think we're ready to go to routine action, business.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. Is there any changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of June 25th, 2013.
Move to approve.
Say again.
We have a motion to approve the county commission minutes. Any changes, questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $1,556,740.45.
Looking for a motion to pass.
Paid bills.
Second.
Would you comment, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
Today's bills include about $110,000 for Correct Care Solutions, $750,000 in highway spending, and there are a number of entities getting significant allocations, for example, the Baltic Fire Department, $17,000, Brandon Fire Department, $37,000, and the list goes on for some hundreds of thousands, I would say.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments? If not, those in favor approving the bills say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes.
There are no reports today. The next item is personnel. A is a motion to approve the routine action.
Good morning. You don't look like Carrie at all.
Good morning, genomics of human resources.
Go ahead, John. Is there any questions about routine action?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second to approve routine action. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Now you get to speak.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for July 2013.
Okay, in July, we have one anniversary. Ten years of service in the public advocates office is Paula Albrecht DeMent. She's the administrative assistant.
Item C is to recognize volunteers and county government for June 2013.
In June, there were over 230 volunteers, and they volunteered in a number of different departments, as always, the museum, public defender's office, state's attorney's office, the sheriff's office, emergency management, and in the jail.
Thank you, Jen. Any comments? An incredible group of volunteers who are pretty dedicated month after month after month, so thank you.
We see a lot of the same names, so it's always, it's good to see those people who are interested in volunteering.
It's awesome.
Yep.
Thank you for bringing that forward.
Thanks. There are no application for abatements today, and there are no notices and requests. The next item is a planning and zoning notice, Dustin Powers.
Before Dustin starts, we're going to let people embarrass him for a minute since he's decided to leave county government and move on, he thinks. If you want to give us one minute of a story about where you're going and what you're going to do, Dustin, that'd be great.
All right. I'm actually staying in town here. I'm going to work for the city of Sioux Falls in the community development department in the economic development division, working as an economic development coordinator, so that's where I'll be. So you might see me if I'm working on any tips or anything within the city. Those will not be presented in front of you guys, so I may be back here someday.
Well, good luck. Our loss is certainly their gain, and we wish you well. So thank you for your service.
All right. Today, we're looking at a first reading for rezoning. An application has been submitted to rezone property from A1 agricultural to rural residential. The site is located on the east side of Sioux Falls on East 41st Street at the intersection of South River Bluff Road. This is a 2.63 acre parcel, and it sits adjacent to the Pine Hills addition. The lot is being requested because it does not have a residential building eligibility on the property under the current zoning district, so the applicant is requesting to rezone the north 1.3 acres to allow one housing eligibility on that property. So he's only requesting to rezone half of it because he only wants one residential housing eligibility. If we were to rezone the whole thing, it would be potentially if you could build two houses, but he's only requesting for the one. The planning commission, planning commissions heard this item on the June 24th meeting. It was a joint meeting. It is in the joint jurisdiction of the city of Sioux Falls. At that meeting, it was on the regular agenda, and it was brought forth to city council and the county commission with a recommendation of denial due to a split decision. The city planning commission voted four zero to recommend approval, and the county planning commission voted three one to recommend denial for this item. So it was a split decision coming before you. Action today is, this is a first reading to amend MC 30-02, the 2002 revised joint zoning ordinance with the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. This is to schedule a hearing for July 23rd, 2013 at 5:00 PM at Carnegie Town Hall, 235 West 10th Street. So today, we're just looking for approval to publish notice.
Thank you, Dustin. Excuse me. Thank you, Dustin. Does anyone have any questions?
Make a motion to publish.
Say again.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barth? I was the one vote in the county planning that in favor of this.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion to publish. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item number nine, our petition for compromise of lien. John Pecos.
Yeah, we have several this morning. First is on DPNO 61730 in the amount of $7,041. This was actually something that was asked to be reconsidered. The applicant is currently requesting us to reconsider her application for a compromise of the lien in the amount of $7,045.91. This was denied on June 18th, 2013. This was the circumstance where we actually received a check in full several days prior to having the consideration on the application for remitting the lien proceeds back to the applicant, and that was denied by the commission. The applicant was in the process of selling her home in Sioux Falls, and of course, the lien needed to be resolved before the sale could close. There is, in fact, a letter from the escrow company indicating that the sale did close on June 7th of 2013, and that, of course, that check apparently was sent, according to the escrow company, in error. However, the applicant states that if we did not receive that check, she would have been able to receive from the proceeds $5,519.3. Because of the error allegedly made by the escrow company, she requests that we go ahead and to send the check back to her. The original application requested a compromise and lien only as it applies to the property. If you remember, this was the lien that was related to amounts that were accrued for the public defender's office, and currently, there are some open files for the applicant at the public defender's office at this time. So the only new information is that we do have a letter from the escrow company. I guess I did have the opportunity to go ahead and read that letter, and I guess I disagree with the tenor of the letter insofar that all the other individuals that had judgments or liens against the property were paid. And in this particular instance, the escrow company has a duty to safeguard that property and to make sure the liens are lined up and they're going to be receiving those bonds. So I guess I differ with the tenor of the letter in that somehow there was a mix-up that was made. That's why we call it escrow. They have a legal duty to all the different individuals that have a claim or a lien against that particular property. If it wasn't done that way, then nobody would use escrow companies. So I guess I disagree with the tenor of the letter. I don't believe there was a mix-up or error that was made, because we do have a lien against the property. So with that being said, I'll float a motion to see if we will remit the proceeds back to the applicant. I don't know if I'll get a second.
Is there a second to Commissioner Pecos's motion to refund the check? Ken, would you like to make a comment?
Well, I think the applicant may be present.
Okay.
And by the way, if the applicant wishes to speak to the commission, she or he will, can speak. You don't have to stand up. You don't have to identify yourself. You can speak from where you're sitting if you do wish to address the commission. So if the applicant is here and you want to speak, please feel free to do so.
Oh, I guess this is some confusion about this one. I'm not saying that I don't owe this money. I'm not asking to be forgiven for this money. I want to pay this money. And I'm not asking for the proceeds back. My parents had a pocket like $1,500. I was just asking to see if I could have that part taken off the lien so I could pay it back first thing because I started off my money. And I'm not asking for the proceeds. I want to take care of this money. Everybody else wants to take care of it. The whole point of the escrow company, they were supposed to hold it until after I came and spoke my piece about it, but they paid it beforehand, and I was being told that it's too late. But that was their fault because they, we actually had a legal agreement with them to hold the money. That's the reason why it was a problem. Because there's no problem about them giving you the money. There was just a date. They're supposed to wait until July to give you the money, and they didn't. They did it beforehand. And I'm, and I understand, I'm not trying to ask for all that. I agree I owe the money. I just want to be able to give my parents back the money that they put in because we had to come to a closing sale for $1,500. I just want to be able to give that to them, and I want to start paying them back on my home because I'm just, I'm going to try to get it back on my feet and take care of everything else that I've been taking care of it. It's just, this is the last, last hurdle right now for me. So I have three kids, and I'm struggling, and I, but I want to do this because it makes me feel better. And that's the only reason why I'm asking for this compromise, just so I can make payments myself. And that's why this request is coming in.
Thank you very much. So I made my motion.
Thank you for your comments. Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? If not, motion dies for lack of second. We'll go to the second item.
Okay, next, we have DPNO number 75940, and this is in the amount of $2,371. This particular applicant is requesting a compromise of the lien. The applicant is in the process of refinancing a home she shares with her boyfriend in Sioux Falls. As a part of the refinancing, she is going to have her name added to mortgage during a title search. A county aid lien of $2,371 was noted against the applicant. This also was a lien for public defender services that was completed in April of 2011. After the lien was recorded, the applicant made a request for the commission to compromise the lien in full with no payment due to the fact that she was found not guilty during a subsequent trial. The commission denied the request on May 31st, 2011, about a little over a year ago. Since that time, the applicant has made partial payment of $10 on the account. The closing date for the refinancing has not been set pending the outcome of the compromise request. The applicant is apparently a mother of two children. She is employed, and she has an annual income of roughly $28,000. In her last income tax return, she showed an annual income of $18,727, but this was before she completed school and secured employment. She received a refund of $8,067. That refund was used to pay for living expenses during school and before securing her current job. The applicant has assets of $8,505 consisting mostly of her vehicle and apparently backed child support payments. She lists liabilities of $34,000 consisting of $28,000 in student loans and $6,000 in credit card debt. Once again, the applicant is requesting this release. She has made a small payment to the county lien since the original denial and found it was easier to set money aside to put towards payment. She is requesting a release in full upon the immediate payment of $700, which is roughly 30% of the lien balance. Coupled with the fact she was found not guilty in the original criminal charge, and her financial situation has changed since she's secured work, the applicant hopes she will look favorably upon her request for the compromise. So I'll make a motion for $700, only 30%. See if I get a second.
We have a motion. Is there a sec?
And she is also here.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Same rules apply. You can stand and make comments without coming to the microphone. We can hear you from here. That's fine if you're comfortable doing that, so if you, or you can just sit there. That's great.
Forgive me a little bit, I'm speaking in first people. I hate to keep referring to this referencing back to when I'm not guilty and all of this. I drug the charges out through a nine to 10 month trial and began to prove my innocence, and I've set the money aside. I've secured my employment, and I'm just looking for this to be forgiven so I can find my money back on my home. The date has not been set because of depending on the outcome of this. Just asking.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for the applicant? We have a motion to accept 30% as a settlement. Is there a second to that 30%? Is there a second for the 30%? If not, motion is denied for lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I would make a motion for 50%. If the applicant could make a payment of 50%, I would accept that.
Okay. We have a motion for 50% of the lien. Is there a second?
A second. That amount would be $1,185.50. $1,185.50.
Does the applicant want to make any comments in reference to that? Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve lien satisfaction of $1,185.50. Is there any comments or questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I'm trying to get, this is the one that had an $8,000 return. Let's see, here we go. Tax return, there didn't seem to be any effort at all to pay this. It's a public defender deal. This is not a welfare deal, and I cannot support it.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Hi, Berger?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Pecos?
Yes.
Bennega?
Yes. Motion passes three to two. The amount then will be $1,185.50, which is 50% of the lien, correct? Thank you for coming.
Next is on DPNO number 65495 in the amount of $4,465.40. The applicant currently is making a request to pay on a lien in the amount of $4,380.40 on a county aid lien and to pay just $2,500. This amount is approximately 56% of the $4,465.40 that was incurred from the public advocates' representation back in 2009. This account was actually transferred over to our collection agency. However, no contact has actually been made by the collection agency with the applicant. The applicant currently is employed. She's purchasing her first home scheduled for July 12th, 2013. Through the operations at the close, she was given the impression that her bankruptcy in 2010 would have taken care of the county aid lien. Although back in the past, when I was first elected, the judge, the bankruptcy judge at the current time actually allowed for those to be discharged. However, the current bankruptcy judge has felt that the county aid lien's priority status, so those are not discharged. The applicant is currently not expected to pay closing costs due to the FHA first-time home buyers loan. However, with her 2012 tax return, return money of $6,679, that was actually spent on the house inspection, the appraisal, and earnest money equalling $1,500 of the offering. That actually shores up the $2,500 for this compromise that is being offered. The applicant noted that she submitted her 2012 income tax addendum where she claimed only one child instead of two, and she also shows that her ex-husband switched off the years claiming the child as a tax deduction. However, apparently, he was incarcerated at the time and has made no support. Nevertheless, he did claim the child. She repaid $2,100 of this assistance and claiming of the child, therefore, the actual refund was limited to $4,200. The applicant lists assets of a retirement savings account of the 2012 Mazda, both totaling $29,221. Liabilities are listed at $15,620 for student loans and, of course, the loan on the vehicle. The applicant is excited about securing a home for both she and her two children. She requests that the county commission look favorably upon her request to offer $2,500 to release the county aid in full, and that's roughly 56% of the amount of the money that is currently on file with the county, so I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the 56%, which is $2,500 of the lien. Are there any questions or comments? Is the applicant here by chance? No, it does not.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Barth?
I just would note again that there have been numerous partial payments dating back some years, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the $2,500. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes four one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next is on DPNO number 27725 in the amount of $1,374.80. The applicant currently has requested a compromise of lien in the amount of $1,374.80. The applicant requests that the lien be compromised and released in full payment of $375. The applicant indicates he's attempting to refinance his home, and he's unable to complete the process until the lien is resolved. There is no date set on that closing. There is a single charge for services provided by the public defender's office in 2009. According to the applicant, he was apparently told by his public defender at the time that pleading guilty to the charge against him would be less than contesting the matter to make it go to trial. He states that the total cost would be roughly between $200 and $300. Based on this information, the applicant actually decided to plead guilty. However, it appears that there may have been some other charges added to the original complaint. In the application, the applicant indicates that he's a truck driver currently unemployed, and his 2012 tax return lists annual income of $27,357. He indicates his total assets of approximately $76,000, which includes his home, a 1996 vehicle, and household goods. His liabilities total roughly $74,000, including a mortgage and several other small personal loans. Once again, the applicant is offering $375 for a grand total on a lien that roughly amounts to $1,374.80. I'll make the motion. I don't know if I'll get a second.
We have a motion to accept the $375 lien settlement. Is the applicant here? No. Is there a sec?
I don't want a second, but I have a question for John.
Okay, sure. Go ahead.
John, looking at the payment stuff, there, there's a compromise in full in 2006.
Yeah, I see that.
And so did we previously allow a compromise on this same individual?
It looks like we had a compromise, but, compromise in full, but then after that, there was another lien that was incurred for one of our repeat customers.
Get your question answered.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for John? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I guess I got a question. The allegedly, the public defender told him $300, $200 to $300, you plead guilty. What, is there any basis to that, or were there additional charges that cost more money? Or I guess, Ken, would you like to answer that?
Well, the only thing I could perhaps speculate upon is, you know, you'll notice that in one of the early charges, that was between $200 and $300. So I don't know if perhaps the individual, you know, might have got his cases mixed up, but that's all I can speculate.
One other question, Ken. There's initially a court-appointed attorney and then public defender clause.
Correct.
What, can you explain that?
I cannot. We didn't go into depth to see what that charge was back in 1992. We didn't go back that far, Commissioner.
I could answer that. The court-appointed attorney would have been a private outside attorney that would have been appointed because there could have been a conflict with the public defender's office at the time.
But then the public defender took it.
Yep.
It looks like it was on a, you know, with a gap, it's probably an entirely different charge. I was referring to, I have no idea what the charges were back in 92 and 98. I didn't go back and look that far.
Thank you, Ken. We have a motion on the table for a compromise of $375. Is there a second? Is there a second to that motion? If not, motion is denied for the lack of second. Go to opportunity for public comment. Anyone who would like to speak to us in reference to an item that is not on the agenda, we'd like to hear from you. Commissioner, Ex-Commissioner Colby, welcome.
Thank you. Bob Colby, 636 West 21st Street. Having been involved with, excuse me, history most of my life because of my business, and as of the 1st of June this year, I celebrated 41 years in the same business as being self-employed, which is something that I don't think most people can say, having been that long involved with the same enterprise. Because of that and my interest in history, about 15 years ago, and I think this was before Commissioner Pecos was on the commission, city counselor, excuse me, Bob Jamison and I made a proposal to the joint city council and county commission that we pursue and archive and building for the Siouxland Heritage Museums because things were getting full at that point in time, and we were looking at an archive for some of our records being held by the county and the city. That took place at the school lunch facility where they made and prepared the noon meals for the students. So you can tell about how far back that was. We, both Mr. Jamison, Commissioner, Counselor Jamison, and I thought that by this time, this would have come to fruition. We have a piece of property that was given to the county approximately six years ago for such purposes, and it has been kind of slowly going nowhere. I'm concerned, because I sit on the South Dakota State Historical Society Board of Trustees, and we are involved there with archiving materials and saving some of the important historic artifacts for the state of South Dakota. I'm also concerned the same thing happens here with Minnehaha County. So I guess I'm here to ask a question. What is your take on, and what is your support of this particular endeavor? Because we have the land, the county, that is, has the land. The ground has been graded, and I see that there's going to be some joint budget hearings coming up between the city and the county dealing with this particular enterprise. And rather than calling each of you individually and trying to find you, you're all here now, and I would be curious as to your particular take on this particular structure. So with that question in mind, what is the county's position on construction of a building for the three-dimensional artifacts? By that, I mean carriages and things like that that are now currently stored off-site, as well as the archive of some of the county's paper goods, as well as the courts, et cetera. And I would solicit your response.
I will make a comment just for the satisfaction of the conversation. We have taken a position that we will address this in our budget hearings. This is part of our capital improvement program, if you will. Those budget numbers will be reviewed, I think, in middle of July. I can't remember the exact date.
The budget hearing for the capital improvements schedule is July 17th.
July 17th. So when we get further down with the budget where we know where all our operating costs are, then we'll address some of the capital needs that we have. I will tell you that we are aware of the fact that most of us got an email yesterday that the mayor has asked us to consider a different proposal, and he will address that in his budget hearings in the future, and that we will talk to... in his budget hearings in the future, and that we will talk to him about that at some point in the next few weeks to see where that's at. The city council needs to address their percentage of that investment before we will move forward with ours, because frankly, it's a 50-50 partnership, and we don't have a $42 million reserve right now. In fact, I think we have $42 maybe.
In there.
Or somewhere around there. So the issue is, is that we won't address it in a public meeting as far as the decision-making process until that July 18th, 17th meeting, when we address all the capital improvement program proposals that we have.
Very good. I will give you one piece of my take on it and some of my, I guess you'd have to call it advice. Many times people think about archiving the hard goods, paper, books. Everything is being digitized. Everything is being done this way, that way. It's taking up less space. Every time we've come up with a technology that takes up less space and is easier, quote-unquote, "to do," it becomes more fragile. Too many times, people are of the belief that we store this stuff. How many of us now have watched how many different technologies take place in the last 20 years? The items that we are archiving may not take up much space, but we don't archive the machinery that reads this particular technology. And how many have 8-track tapes? How many have 8-track tape players? Wire recording machines, they aren't around, but people have wire recordings. We have reel-to-reel tapes, but we don't archive the reel-to-reel tape recorders and readers. We need to archive this machinery, because when we get the technology, we convert it. The A-stuff gets converted quickly. The B-stuff, maybe, and the C-stuff, we'll get around to it someday. The C-stuff will become important, but we do not archive the equipment that will turn that into something that becomes usable. We will get ourselves to the point where we will be like a blind person in a library full of books. All the information is there, but we have no way of getting it to be usable. So I think that this is imperative that we consider archiving more than just the records, but the material that will read the information and have extra parts and pieces available, because who knows what the next technology will be? You know, we can't imagine it will become imperative that we have whatever we are using today and what we used five years ago. You can't get some of the old machinery. If you look at, what was it, Gates' original laptop computer that they, there's only four or five left in the world, and that was the state of the art. So, thank you very much for your take.
Thank you, Bob. Thanks for coming. Any other individuals who would like?
Mr. Chairman, I would have a comment, and I agree with Mr. Colby's ability to make comments on this issue. It's a big issue. I do not think it's appropriate to be quizzing the commission on their position on things. You explained very well what we're going to do, and I just, for the record, I don't think this should be an, this should be a forum for quizzing us as to what our position is on this or that item.
Any other comments or questions from the public on any item that's not on the agenda? Nobody's rushing to the front, so we'll go to the next item.
Bigger Business, item number 10, is consider a motion to purchase 284-foot snowblades from contract 16390 competitively bid by the state of South Dakota and awarded to Chemong. Is that how you pronounce it, DJ?
Your guess is as good as mine.
Supply Corporation, total cost $47,257.20. DJ Boothby.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. We do have these snowplow blades included as part of our annual bid letting. Our annual bid letting was completed prior to us finding out about these snowblades on the state bid, and the cost difference between the state bid and our annual contract is about $12.42 per foot. The total cost difference for this order, if we were given permission to order off of the state bid as opposed to our own contract, totals $13,910.40 in savings. Our contract is with Titan Machinery. They are aware that we're pursuing this purchase through the state contract, and they are okay with that. They understand, I should say, our request. Our contract with Titan Machinery has no provision for them being a sole provider and does not indicate any quantity that we intended on ordering, and so they do understand that we are pursuing a cheaper price. We did give them the opportunity to match the state price, and they did not take advantage of that. So if you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Thank you, DJ. Anyone have questions for DJ?
Just one. There's a pencil note on here that says 4201. Is that?
I don't know who wrote that, but that's incorrect.
Okay, it is 4220.
Correct. I think the original email said 4241, and then somebody wrote 4201, but the correct price is 4221.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for DJ? If not?
Make a motion to approve this purchase.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bid from Chemong Supply Corporation. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 11 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaw County and Southeastern Behavioral Health for Qualified Mental Health Professional Services at the Minnehaw County Regional Juvenile Detention Center. Todd Cheever.
Good morning, Commissioners. Todd Cheever from the Juvenile Detention Center. As part of JDAI, the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, we have made a number of changes to try to improve conditions at the JDC. One of those is having a qualified mental health professional. I'm asking that this agreement be signed. It's approximately $50 per week for them to be on-call, and we call them regularly at all hours of the night and day, and then $50 per hour for services that are provided at the JDC when they are counseling and working with youth and when they are possibly training us, providing training.
Thank you, Todd. Does anyone have any questions, Commissioner Barth?
Todd, is this in our budget?
It can be covered under our Alternatives budget. We will have the money to cover this, and it is necessary.
Thank you, Todd. Any other questions for Todd? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve the contract. So moved?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any other questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item number 12 is a discussion to identify and establish legislative priorities in preparation for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Annual Convention. Ken McFarlane.
Commissioners, the bylaws of the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners require that any resolutions that we would like to bring forward for consideration at our annual convention for legislative action needs to be submitted to the state office prior than, prior to August 1st. This will allow enough time by the Resolutions Committee of the Association prior to the convention that does happen in September. As we did last year, we're providing an opportunity on this week's agenda to discuss potential ideas that you folks would have for legislative actions that you would like to pursue or at least present at the state convention in September. Based on the discussion today, then I would prepare resolutions, because we need to submit these in resolution format to the association and bring them back to you in a meeting later this month, probably late in July, to act on those formally, to see if you want to submit those to the association for consideration. We did send out an email asking for some input from department heads, if there were other ideas that they wanted to bring forward. I know that some of you have some of your own ideas that you will talk about today, but the ones we received from the department heads, and I just will bring them or just mention them for your consideration. One came from the Emergency Management Department. It talks about an exemption to see if we can get a legislative exemption for emergency vehicles through some of our load limits that are posted for both roads and/or bridges, and that currently there, no such exemption exists for those emergency vehicles, and of course, that does cause some issues. And the other one is, one that came from the Highway Department, is to clear up some gray areas that exist between counties and municipalities when the municipalities annex up to the county road that might pass through or along their jurisdiction, and to clear up who's responsible for maintenance in those areas, and that those have caused some issues for us in the past. So those are two suggestions that came from the department heads after we sent out the notification. And I will remind you, some of the other elected offices, Register of Deeds, State's Attorney, Treasurer, I mean, they have their own associations, and I'm sure there will be legislative items that will come up through those particular associations, you know, that are particular to their offices, but for the appointed offices, these are the ones we've got so far. So, but again, I know that some of you have some other ideas that you want to float.
Thanks, Ken. Obviously, can't explain that very well. We need to at least address a few of those items that people have issues with. I know that I've heard from one of you that does have an ongoing concern, which is legit. And Mr. Barth, if you'd like to start the process?
Thank you, and I do have three of them that I brought forward, and I'll have Robert throw them up. I just briefly typed them up. Basically, the first one would be to repeal the tax limitation, which is the 3% of rate of inflation, whichever is lower. That certainly has handicapped us over the years, and, you know, the state government has never considered themselves to be under any kind of limitation. And here we are, frozen into a position where Minnehaw County's budget is $14 million less than Pennington's budget. And if we don't ask for this repeal, we're obviously not going to get it. The second item would be to raise the sales tax on alcohol additionally 10%, split between the state and the counties, and I think I've discussed that previously. And the third item would be to remove the 20-year limitation on opt-outs. Last year, as you know, we opted out for $4 million. That was not an easy decision for us. Certainly, there was some public dismay over that thing. When that expires in 20 years, are we going to lay off the people that we hired with last year's budget? Are we going to say to people, "We're hiring you with this opt-out, and, but we can only hire you for 20 years"? The commission 20 years from now is going to have, have to go through that whole process again, and that's, the fact that the legislature refuses to do its job and fund us adequately makes us go through this extra hoop and confront the public with the choice of law enforcement or anarchy, et cetera. They're not doing their jobs, and they're certainly putting extra pressure on us. I think that each one of these would be difficult on its own, but I think if you don't ask for it, you don't get it. And I will also say, going back to alcohol, if you go to the liquor store, on the very top shelf is the whiskey that they're selling for $1,000 a bottle. One notch down, it's for $100 or $80, and then down at the bottom, it's the $5 stuff. Well, the stuff on the top shelf makes it more palatable to purchase the $60 stuff, so if you, let's go for all of it and hopefully get something.
I've noticed for a long time, you know a lot about liquor stores.
I have my favorites, too.
Okay. Any comments about any of those topics that Commissioner Barth has brought forward? Commissioner Kelly?
I'd be curious if they've ever pursued this. I don't know that you could raise the sales tax, but you could, there would be some sort of, there already is an entertainment tax on some of this stuff. I don't know what all the taxes that go on are, but the big complaint in the past, and the big fight has been that the, I think they pay the tax when they get it in the warehouse, and that's been, you know, so that $1,000 bottle has already had the tax paid on it. This is chaining it back to a user pay, and, which, which is, in my mind, maybe legitimate because the users are the ones that are causing us the problem. Well, they're the primary cause of the problem that's existing in our law enforcement. Yeah, we're spending 50-some percent of our budget on public safety, and probably 75% of that is related to alcohol in some way or other, so I would agree with Jeff that perhaps we need to pursue that again, only don't do a nickel a drink because that didn't work. But somehow, I think we've got to continue, and I think we've got to keep talking to commissioners. I can't imagine the other counties don't have similar problems with their state attorneys and everything else.
Thank you, Dick. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. On the alcohol issue, the tax, excise tax, I think, brings in something like $11 million a year for the state. It's not a lot, and it was last raised in 1987.
Commissioner Pecos?
I've got an idea related to Jeff's reveal of the tax limitations, although I wouldn't actually say we need to repeal those tax limitations. I would just make it even smaller. Let us go back and adjust the mill levy. When we had this property tax limitation imposed, what Minnehaw County did is we adjusted our mill levy to the absolute minimum. Many counties were at the maximum, and unfortunately, when the state locked us in, they made no accommodations for adjustment to that mill levy. That could significantly help us, even if we were allowed to adjust it. But in the decision of trying to placate and to assuage some of the concerns of the legislators at the time, we lowered our mill levy. Well, what that did is it locked us in at the absolute lowest, and we've been struggling with that ever since. For example, Pennington County, they're not at the lowest level of their mill levy, and yet they're a smaller county, and yet they have more money in their budget than we do in Minnehaw County. It's amazing when you think about that, but it's just that simple little tweak. So I would ask the legislature, "Adjust the mill levy." And the other idea that I've got is, when it comes to the new law enforcement bill that just went into effect yesterday, I would ask that the state review any felon that is sentenced to be in our county jail beyond 180 days. Anything beyond that 180 days, we would get payment from the state in lieu of sending them up to the South Dakota State Penitentiary, because at this point, we are right now balancing those individuals that would have been in state facilities, on state budgets, on top of our shoulders, because now those felons, which normally would have been going to the state penitentiary, are sitting in our jails on our budgets with our taxpayers funding the cost of it. And so I would ask the state to go ahead, that beyond 180 days on a felony, that number of days, whatever their sentence due, up to a year, I believe it is, under the new law, we should be able to get some sort of compensation to assuage that pain that we now have to pay for, because all they did was they transferred that off their books and onto our books, and we have to pay for it now. So I think that the state should do that. That's my idea.
Thank you, John. Any other proposals, conversations about the existing ones? Commissioner McFarlane?
How we craft these resolutions is also going to be important, just for some other background. I mean, part of the requirement that the association has is, number one, you have to determine what is the fiscal impact on that. You know, so if you can put a dollar amount to it, that's a requirement on the footnote of the resolution. You also need to say, does it, you know, what is the impact of the resolution on counties itself? Is it regional? Is it to all counties? Is it something particular for us? And so those are the things that as we look to craft the resolutions, we also got to keep in the back of our heads, too. And that's important because when you, especially when
And that's important because when you, especially when you take a look at some of these right now, like the tax limitation, remember, the property tax limitation is really a limit on the total amount of revenue from property taxes that you can collect, and that. And the mill levies, and that's why it's difficult to craft the language if you're going to quote-tweet mill levies, because the calculation of the mill levy is really the very last thing in the process. Once you determine how much property tax revenue you need to collect, you spread that against your valuation base, and that tells you what the mill levy needs to be to collect that amount of revenue. And that, and with the way the limitation works, you're limiting your dollars that you can collect in the first place, and that. And then, you spread them against your valuation base to determine the mill levy. So, when we write these things, we just need to be very clear on the mechanisms, you know, to achieve what it is that we want to achieve. And so, like on the limitation, it's not going to be enough to just say, "Well, we're going to change the mill levy." The language needs to be a little different to remove, or to enhance our ability to collect the actual dollars. Because mill levy is simply the very last calculation in the formula to collect those dollars.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
And isn't it true that Minnehaha County did do our best efforts to try to limit that?
You bet. I mean, when the opt-out came up, there were some things that we knew back then, that the, that this limitation was coming down the pike, and that. And we had made adjustments for that in our revenue estimates with that in mind, that that was going to happen. And so, I mean, we did do our due diligence back then, and we adjusted our revenue estimates that we expected to get. And that did, in fact, like I said, freeze us at that point and start the new ceiling for us that's adjusted because of the property tax limitation. Because we had, in fact, adjusted those revenue estimates because of that pending legislation.
Other questions for Ken?
Ken?
Yeah.
Is it possible for us to figure out what, beyond 180 days, a felon could be sentenced to our county jails? Could we work with the Sheriff's Office to figure out how many individuals beyond 180 days that are felons sitting in our county jail? Is it possible for us to put a number to that?
It might be. I mean, we'd have to work with, you know, yeah, we'd have to work with the sheriff to see about breaking down those numbers. I mean, he does a very good job of classification and who's where in the process, and that. And like I said, we'll have to take a look at the impact of the legislation, because as I understand right now, prior to July 1, I mean, there is 100, that was 180-day cap in a county jail.
Yeah.
And that, so, we may not have any numbers to compare to yet, and that, for anybody beyond that, because it's so brand-new.
Right.
Because right now, there is, I believe, the cap on 180, and that. So, we'll see. But I think as we get further into this, absolutely, I think you can, you'll be able to pull those numbers to see, all right, who is in there past that point of time.
Mr. Barth?
Well, we've had basically seven items brought up here, and I think we should go forward in our office developing those ideas. That said, I think that in some ways, maybe we, as a county, need to plan on going forward on our own on some of these things. Obviously, Pennington County doesn't need the mill levy raised or whatever. But I know that even last year, when we, or maybe it was two years ago, when we talked about a different split on the alcohol tax, where part of it would come to the counties, during the committee meeting on that with the State Association, a commissioner from a smaller county said, "Well, that's not fair, because we'll only get $30,000, and Minnehaha County is going to get $600,000." That despite the fact that we're spending, say, $15,000, $20 million on alcohol, and they probably are spending less. So, we're not necessarily getting the support from small counties that we do, we should. And on the other hand, I know that, I think, well, Shannon County wanted permission to do banking more than one county away, because there were no banks in Shannon County. And we supported them on that. So, I think there is a, at some point, maybe we need to go on our own, to try to get our own agenda pushed, whether or not the State Association backs us.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kelly?
To go along with Jeff, you know, there's seven items up there, but you can only, you know, you can only do so much work. You've only got so much of a staff. I think some of the items are specific to a department, and I would think perhaps, like the Emergency Management thing, is really an emergency management throughout the state issue. And if we were to concentrate our resources, nothing is more all-encompassing on our budget than the, than the public safety side of it. I'd like to, and I got a lot of nods when I was talking, but I determined long ago that that's not a good way to count votes, because they don't show up. But I would like to take Jeff's idea, I don't know, I think it has to be developed a little bit more, and let Jeff work hard with Robert and come up with a very thorough presentation that we can make before the thing. We've only got one, two, three, four, four weeks, you know, to get this done. And this week is kind of shot with the Fourth of July, but, like Ken said, we need to have, we need to have numbers, we need to have, when they, when these small counties come up and say something like that, we need to have something to respond back to them. But every one of them, and the state likes user pays. We do it with, we do it with the wheel tax, we do it with sales tax, and this is a way to tax the product when it's bought at the store or bought at the bar. And it doesn't put a hardship on the wholesalers, not that I don't think they have any hardships, but I really would like to pursue, I'd like, personally, I'd like to concentrate on just one thing that we can take in and hope we can get it done for whatever, and I don't know what the next process is, and, you know, whether you get agreement or whether we just give him approval or what.
Well, we can, you know, on all of the ones that have been present today, and I will, I can also help Robert prepare some of these things, Commissioner. But we can, we can do all-
Oh, I thought you were the manager.
We can do, prepare resolutions for consideration, really, on all of these, and that, so that there is a formal record of whether or not you support these or not, you know, to go forward to the, to let-
But my point is, you know, you can only-
I understand.
-concentrate on certain things, and I didn't mean to leave you out of the equation by any stretch, Ken.
And that, and I agree with you that I would, you know, right now, in this part of the process, you have ideas for consideration, and that. And the whole idea behind this process is to identify what those ideas are, get you to think about them a little bit, and that we'll prepare the resolutions on them. And then, when we bring them to you in July, then you can make the decisions which ones that you want to concentrate on as an organization to forward to Pire. And some of these may not survive.
But we're in July, so I mean, is there, are you talking next week?
No. I'm talking, I said the end of July. They have to be to the, they have to be in front of the association by August 1st.
And when, when does the association act on them?
They don't.
September.
The Resolutions Committee will meet prior to the convention, which is in, you know, the convention's in September. But anything that survives the Resolutions Committee process then goes to the floor at convention in September, and that's when it's determined which of these resolutions that have bubbled up from the grassroots will end up being part of the association's legislative package.
So, we have a couple of months to work on.
Absolutely. But we, but for now, we just need to identify which ones we, as Minnehaha County, would like to submit to the association for consideration. And like I said, we can, we can do resolutions for your consideration on all of these. Some of them may not survive here at the end of July that you want to forward. And I would agree with you that it makes much more sense to concentrate on just a few than it would be to say, "Here's all seven." But that's your decision to make at the end of July.
Any other questions, comments, any additions?
How come I get taken to the woodshed by the, by our executive?
That's why I introduced him as Commissioner.
Yeah.
There are seven here, but I have to say that I agree that some of these need to be taken by other associations, and I'm just going to throw out for conversation, and you guys can say yes or no. But I think the emergency vehicle load limit and the county maintenance can be done by, frankly, the county's highway department's load limits, and maintenance is the same thing, regardless of which vehicle it is. So, maybe that's something that they could work with, the county highway superintendents. You can't talk until I'm done. That's the first time he's ever listened. The other one is the mill levy issue that John brought up. John, how do you feel about trying to put a resolution together to explain that?
Yeah, I agree. It's going to be tough. But, you know, that's-
I like the idea.
They're waiting in it. I mean, they don't, they don't realize it, but it's affecting them.
Correct. Do you want to make a stab at it?
Global warming.
That really falls in with the repeal of the tax limitation.
Yeah.
We can make that resolution.
Well, do you want to try to combine those two?
Sure.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to sully Jeff's good, good idea with mine, but if he'd be willing to do that, that'd be nice.
He looks successful.
You can't say anything.
The sales tax on alcohol, I think, has been discussed many times. I don't know that we have any opposition to pursuing that. Ken, you want to give that another stab?
Maybe it's going on my computer. I have many different versions.
I'm sure. And the last one is, no, I have one more. Besides that, it's the 20-year limitation on opt-outs. Jeff, how do you feel about including that or saving that for any day?
It's up to the group.
Personally, I don't think, if you have some success with any of those other ones, the 20-year limitation on opt-outs is not an issue, frankly. And whether it's 20 years, 10 years, 15, 30, we don't know what's going to happen three years from now. So, I have a little bit of a concern about even trying to identify that one. Although I agree in concept, I think it's a great suggestion. I don't know how that we can do that one.
Well, I agree. Salmon can swim upstream, but I think county commissioners have a difficult time doing it. You'd really be going against the tide on that.
You guys' analogies today is great. And what's the one I'm missing?
The 180 days.
Oh, 180 days. On our cost, if you will, to our public. How do we identify that?
We'd have to have the, we'd work with the Sheriff's Office and get some numbers.
The one concern, and I agree that that is a significant issue, it's a good idea, but I think until the governor's initiative is implemented, we may have some problems even getting that one past the first hurdle, because we don't know what the long-term cost of some of those issues are.
It's not really hard. If we, if we go back and we actually check with the State's Attorney's Office, how many felons did we have in Minnehaha County that were sentenced beyond 180 days? If we run those numbers, if it's over a year, they wouldn't meet in our, in our current system. If it's under a year, beyond 180 days, then we're going to know exactly, and all we have to do is look at the judgments that the judges are imposing. They would then, if we run last year's numbers, we'd get an idea about how many people this would affect and how that would affect our, our budgets.
Should we start with that to find out what the number and the dollar amount is?
Chase down.
Let's do that first, and then we can come back. Commissioner Barth?
If you're, if you're ready for it.
I'm done talking.
I just want to say, I agree with you on those first two with our department heads. At the same time, I think that if we authorize them to speak representing Minnehaha County, that would be something. Because in the past, we have had folks from our county that work for us speaking on behalf of Minnehaha County, when in fact, they were doing so without our-
Approval.
Approval. And, you know, certainly, we have people that are very specific, have a lot of knowledge about special things, but they can't speak on our behalf. And I would have no problem with the Highway Department or the Young and Emergency Management to speak on these issues representing us without our endorsement as on the county commissioner's level, so to speak.
I think what I was trying to say, if I didn't say it, is that we would like them to do draft resolutions on their own, to come back with us rather than assigning it to Commissioner McFarland's group, and then come back with us, and then we can endorse those, because frankly, they understand what could happen or what won't happen with some of those issues. And I think that if we let them do it, since it's a grassroots responsibility in their operation, that's getting it back to where it belongs. I saw a couple of people, Julie, you're trying to hide from me, I know, but do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Good morning, Commissioners. Now, I was just particularly interested in what legislation you want to pursue, you know, on behalf of the Commissioners Association, because we work so closely with the South Dakota Association of County officials, and what affects the Commissioners affects us as well. And I, I see merit with every one of the suggestions that have been made here. It significantly, I think, impacts us financially, and I feel as though if anything is going to be done, I know we repeat this year after year after year, but it seems that sooner or later, someone should be able to understand that we're kind of in dire circumstances. And there are large counties, there are small counties. We don't, most of us don't operate the same, even though we're under the same state guidelines, which is really, produces quite a significant inequity. So, I know the South Dakota Association of County officials is going to be at our convention too, the same time as, as you, you know, exploring some of the resolutions that are going to be coming up, which will be varied, but then I think will ultimately tie in with many of what's been brought up today. So, I'm fairly certain you would get a significant amount of support from our association as well.
Thank you, Julie. Any other comments? Commissioner Beckus?
Well, Julie raises an interesting point, and that's that every county is a little bit different. And the state of South Dakota is a very large building sitting in Pire, South Dakota. And what they need to do to effectuate the laws that they pass is they need somebody out in left field helping them field all the decisions that they're making. And they have that. And that's every little courthouse in South Dakota is a service station, as Mike O'Connor would say, for the state of South Dakota. When people have to come and pay their taxes, they don't drive to Pire, they drive to their county courthouse. We are your partner. Help us help you, state of South Dakota. We want to get the job done, too. We're the guys in the trenches. The people are in the trenches. Let us help you effectuate the laws that you pass. Listen to us.
Thank you. Commissioner Colby, would you like to speak again?
If I may, thank you. Give you a little background history, fellow Commissioners, no longer being there, but one of the things that did promote the liquor tax, the nickel a drink and all that sort of thing, when we went to the legislature, I made this proposition before them that, remember, the feds and the state, they get their tax money before the alcohol leaves the door of the distributor. But the state gets four cents on every dollar sale as sales tax. The county, the city gets two cents on every dollar of sale in sales tax, and the county gets to arrest, adjudicate, defend, incarcerate the people who have problems with alcohol. We don't get any of that tax money. And the best compliment I ever received was from Jeremiah Murphy, saying, "You know, yours is the only argument that makes any sense." But because it makes sense and is logical and reasonable, doesn't mean that the legislature will buy it. And that's one of the things that I worked on, you know, doing some testimony before the legislature many times. The other issue that I had, that I brought up, maybe it's time again to do that and propose this to you, and maybe you'll see if it has any merit. It has to do with the gas sales tax. That goes to state and federal highways to remove snow, cut the weeds, to do the highway patrol. patrol, do the maintenance. But that gas tax has no impact on life-saving on those roads, on the state and federal roads. We have volunteer ambulance services whose initial purpose was to serve the members of their immediate community, those who lived in their town, to give them a better chance at a longer life. Now, the state doesn't give any assistance to these enterprises, though they go out on the interstate and they go out on the state roads and provide life-saving services, they are not remunerated. I'm not arguing that they should be paid for everything that they do because if it's on the county highway or county roadway or township roadway or within the municipalities, that is what they are there for. But the state should underwrite and pay the small volunteer ambulance services for the service they provide on the state and federal highways. 25 or 30 years ago, a commissioner by the name, I think his name was Dooley, it may even have been Tom Dooley from Down in Custer in, maybe it was Fall River County, and he proposed this to Governor, then Governor, Bill Janklow. And Janklow shot him down rather severely because in that particular county, they had the Custer State Park and they were providing services not only for the ambulance but also for the sheriff because these were, this is a state park and the state was providing none of those services. I think it's only fair that if the sales tax, the gas tax money would help to underwrite the volunteer ambulance services when they provide a service on the state and federal roadway. And this is statewide. Every volunteer ambulance service has the same problem. But it won't go anywhere because it has to go through the legislature and they have sometimes the attitude that a former legislator had that said to us when we went to them, ah, you county commissioners, all you ever do is whine. And I won't tell you who that was. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Joe, welcome.
Hi.
I'm sure you came for this reason, right?
Yes, I did, after realizing the sales tax on the alcohol. I would just like to say that on, in state of South Dakota, for the five surrounding states, South Dakota is taxed at the highest rate coming into the state, so you're going to have a real tough time trying to pass something at a state level of 10%. That being said, I know you have a problem and I, I think you need to come up with a great solution, but I don't think you're going to get the 10% split. So I think you better come up with a better plan than that, but I'd gladly help anybody come up with a better plan. And I agree that five cents is not going to cut it either because the taxpayers think they're paying it, but, so I don't know what your solution is, but you'll be a real tough passing a 10% split, sorry.
No, thank you for your comment.
It's a strong commission out there to stop it.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I think we have somewhat of marching orders, Ken, to what we'd like to have you try to accomplish in the next couple of weeks and then bring it back and we'll decide which ones will move forward. My only question is, is if we decide to send it to the associations and they frankly don't adopt those to bring it to the next step, do we still have time to do it on our own or is that just shooting ourselves in the foot?
Well, you can always do it on your own, but the problem that you'll run into is you will truly be doing it on your own. You won't have the weight of the association, you know, lobbying for the bill or testifying for the bill and meeting with legislators at all. I mean, if you forward a piece of legislation on our own, I mean, we're solely responsible to carry the bill, to get the signatures, to the whole thing, to get it drafted by LRC, to get the signatures, to lobby, to testify, et cetera. And that, and we've done that on occasion and we've been successful on some of those things. There are some things that we've not been successful at when we've tried to go on our own and that, but that we have plenty of time to do that even. So if any of these things, we get to the legislature, the, the resolutions process at the association and it doesn't go anywhere and you want a bill forwarded and that to the legislature, we can make that happen and work with LRC, get it drafted, but we are on our own, so.
Thank you.
Ken, Ken's right there, you know, if, if, if we did something on our own, we might as well say goodbye to Ken for the legislative session because you don't know when something's going to happen up there and somebody has to be up there paying attention to it. That's why they have lobbyists up there. But either way, you, you don't know when a committee can get scheduled for it all of a sudden and you'd have to drive up that morning and it's pretty hard to, to really, especially with Minnehaha County with the attitude the rest of state has, or just it's pretty darn hard to keep that under control.
Thank you. I think if we've had our say in this conversation, so let's go to new business. Is there any new business?
We have liaison reports.
Oh, I think we've had enough of those.
I have a liaison report.
You haven't spoken all day.
I know, I've just been waiting.
Okay, go right ahead.
And it's also short. I was at the homeless advisory board yesterday and they were talking about their voucher system, which serves currently about 815 households per, per year. Next year with the sequestration, they're expecting a $10 million decrease in their budget. They said that they do have reserves to cover for about one year, but after that, those are households that will no longer be served. And then to tie in with that, the criminal justice initiative, they're expecting about 400 parolees in the Sioux Falls area looking for housing and about 100 in the Rapid City area looking for housing. And we all know that there is very limited apartment space out there. And the question is, where are we going to put all of these parolees when we already have issues? We have jobs, we just don't have places to put people. So that's my report on liaison.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? If not, we'll go to new business. Any new business?
I have new business.
Commissioner Hybarger?
My new business is I would just like to have Scott speak about the audit that we got our audit report last week from IBALE and he was just going to give you a quick update on that.
Good morning, Commissioner. Scott Wick, Sioux Empire Fair Association. And as Cindy said, we did get our audit report from IBALE last week and we have a clean opinion. They were very pleased with some of the procedures and policies that we had put into effect off of our last audit report. They did have, there was one, one or two areas that they did touch base on. We do have to come up with an official policy for bad debt and uncollectibles. And they did make the transfer, make an adjustment in the general ledger for, when we received the money last November for sponsorship for the fair from Dollar Loan Center, we logged it as sponsorship in unrestricted and it was restricted due to the fact that it was given in November to be used in August of 2013. So they made that adjustment as well. And then they also, as they, as Dean said, with about 90% of their clients, they do the actual financial statements with the accompanying notes and that's something that, that they do. Some companies will do their own, but it's something we'll look forward to doing next year. But they were very pleased with what we had implemented as far as the new procedures for segregation duties, mail procedures, debit card tracking, credit card tracking, things like that. So it was very good overall and we're definitely a lot stronger than we were a few years ago. And, um, did you give them a copy of the report yet?
Yep.
Okay. Hope anybody has any questions?
I have to tell you that I got mine last night and I did not read it yet. So I apologize for that. But that's great that you do have that kind of result. And I'm assuming when you say Dean, you're talking about Dean Bucknall from IBALE?
Dean Bucknall, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he was pleased with the new language in our agreement, however, he did have an issue with the fact that you can terminate it within 90 days and I just, you know, I just told him that that has to be in there. He does, he, in one instance, he considers it a long-term agreement, but then he kind of, he did a lot of time researching it, but we do have a, a clean opinion. And, yeah, we're just moving forward and everything's good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's great. Any questions for Scott? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Any old business? Commissioner Hybarger?
I'm just filming at the end of your
Boy, she just let her go and she opened up.
Sorry. Yesterday, I met with emergency management and the Tri-Vale, a couple representatives from the Tri-Vale School Board and we did discuss, they were here last week, I believe, and asked about putting a fire sire, or emergency siren out at the school district. And so we met with them yesterday and just discussed their options. And at this point, they're going to take it back to their school board and discuss it and then get back with emergency management with what their school board thought of the options that we came forward with.
Thank you. Any other old business? If not, we need to go into executive session for personnel and pending litigation and a legal briefing. Look for a motion to do that. So move? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to go into executive session for personnel, pending litigation and legal. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.